Okay. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2018, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South 5th Avenue, on January 3rd, 2018, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please use the microphone. And assistive listening devices are available. Mrs. Bickhardt, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Burl Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin? Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held October 3rd, 2017, October 17th, 2017, and November 8th, 2017, as distributed?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is that a well? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council reports. Councilwoman Fine, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a short one. Earlier today, the Community Development Block Grant Committee met at Borough Hall and discussed the 2018-2019 proposals for funding certain programs through the Community Development Block Grant. The Committee, the Community Development Block Grant Committee will be holding a public meeting in these chambers next Tuesday at 5:00 PM for the purpose of making official funding recommendations to the Borough Council. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Yes, Mayor, I have a report. We will kick off our free tax assistance program provided by United Way this Wednesday, February 7th, between the hours 9:30 AM and 2:30 PM at the Senior Youth Center. Please call or stop by the center to schedule an appointment and meet the guidelines to take part in this free service. This is open to all. This free assistant program will take place every Wednesday through the tax season. On Tuesday, February 13th, we will be hosting a senior luncheon in celebration of Valentine's Day. Seniors will enjoy Italian cuisine and entertainment by vocalist Christopher Corbin. Free tickets are available to the State Theater on Friday, February 16th, for Drumheart at 8:00 PM. Please contact the center to sign up in details, and this is open to all residents. On Thursday, February 22nd, the seniors will be taking a bus trip to the New Jersey Flower and Garden Show at the Expo Center in Edison, and please contact the center to sign up and see how you can obtain discount tickets. In recreation, the youth basketball season is in full swing with clinic practices and games weekly. Indoor soccer Winter 1 finishes this week, and Winter 2 will begin February 20th. All winter adult programs have begun. These programs run throughout the year, so you can bring, so you can begin in September, January, or March. Or drop in for a rate of $10 per class, and that's paid by check. All participants must fill out a registration form. Our robotics and junior mechanical engineering classes are mid-session. We are registering for baseball and softball, which will begin in March, and youth tai chi club begins to, begun today at 4:30 PM. The youth art painting classes will begin next Wednesday, February 14th. And the, and the youth theater begins Thursday. They will begin rehearsing of Willy Wonka Jr., and show dates will be May 3rd and the 6th, and if you stopped over for the Legally Blonde Junior Musical like I did last month, you're in for another treat. Many of our programs have been filling to capacity, both engineering, youth theater, youth tai chi, and art classes have filled, with chess class close to capacity. The Arts Commission will be meeting this Thursday, February 8th, 6:00 PM, in the Borough Hall Conference Room. AmicentralJersey.com named Windows of Understanding in their recent article, "Ten Best Activities for Central Jersey Outdoor Winter Family Fun." If you haven't heard, the New Brunswick Community Arts Council, Mason Grove School of the Arts, and Rutgers University, and the Highland Park Arts Commission have vanned together for this project. The public art unites local artists, organizations, and businesses to promote compassion and awareness around social justice issues. Two dozen storefront windows showcase, hold on, sorry, my computer's like, hold on. Two dozen storefront windows showcase works of art that address cultural identity, faith-based initiatives, and environmental homelessness, food insecurity, and youth mentoring. The project will be on display until February 15th, and is a great way to turn youngsters onto art and justice. So check out www.windowsofunderstanding.org for more details. And that is it for my report.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Thank you, Councilwoman. The Windows of Understanding program is really a wonderful exhibit. Everyone should stop by. The storefronts are listed on our website. And also, thanks for reading off all the rec, the amazing recreation programs. My kids take basketball, robotics at our starting theater, so it's just wonderful living in this town. And I have a brief report. I'm pleased to announce that both our planning and zoning boards held their reorganization meetings recently and re-elected their existing officers. On Planning Board, the chairperson remains Kim Hammond. Alan Kluger is vice chair. Alan Williams is secretary. And CME is our engineer. On the zoning board, the chair again is Judy Richman. The vice chair, Rob Rosener. The engineer, Bruce Koch. Both boards have appointed Roger Thomas as their attorney, Jim Constantine as their planner, and our deputy borough clerk, Jennifer Santiago, as their clerk. And I just have a couple of save the dates. Registration for our 10th annual, yes, it's been 10 years now, our 10th Annual 5K Run is officially open. Sign up now at runinthepark.org. Special race perks include a long-sleeved t-shirt, and you can upgrade to a tech material. It's got a new logo celebrating our 10th year. The 5K is followed by one of our annual signature events later that day, the famous Highland Park Spring Fling Street Fair. Both events will be held Sunday, May 6th, so stay in town that weekend for all the activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hirsch, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, but I'm busy writing down important dates from Councilwoman Welkowitz and Councilwoman Kim Chohan, because they were very informative. I just wanted to chime in on the rec programs. My son takes chess, and it's an amazing program. The teacher's great, the kids are really into it. Yeah, it's terrific. And I don't play chess, but I, it's fascinating watching it.
He'll have to teach you.
Yeah, he will have to. And I look forward to him also smoking me in the 5K again, so that should be a good time. He's nine. And just on a more serious note, it's been, it's been a busy few weeks and a, a difficult few weeks for town. On January 25th, just nine days after we presented him right here with a plaque for the 2018 MLK Humanitarian Awards, Harry Pagananen entered sanctuary at the Reformed Church of Highland Park for fear of being detained by officers from Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE. ICE had visited Harry's house that morning to detain him. Harry, who's, who's lived in the United States since 1993, and who has two citizen children in the Highland Park Public Schools, is not a criminal and has been an invaluable member of the community. And so over the next few days, you know, the community poured out, and we spent time with Harry, Arthur Jemmy, and Johannes Tasic, all of whom are Indonesian Christians who have taken refugee at the church out of fear of being sent back to their country and facing near certain persecution. The next few days were a whirlwind, as neighbors, friends, my colleagues on council, and I, and even Congressman Frank Pallone and Governor Phil Murphy visited Highland Park to make sure these men were cared for and safe. Then last Friday, we received some hopeful news, thanks to the hard work of the ACLU and the Reverend Seth Capravale. We got word that a federal judge issued a temporary restraining order that prevents the government from executing deportation orders against Harry, as well as Robbie Sanger and Gunawan Liam, who are in the Essex County Detention Facility and were detained that same morning on January 25th. Only Harry was able to seek sanctuary. The other two were actually detained, and they're Metuchen residents, while dropping their children off at school, despite never, despite never having missed check-ins with ICE. While it's been reported that those in sanctuary are free to return home, it's also important to note that they can still be detained, as they could before. They just can't be deported right now. You know, regardless of where, of where anyone stands on the immigration issue, rounding up community members without notice using years-old removal orders instills fear in our communities and shakes us to our core. Our kids go to school with their kids, we work with them, and we pray with them, and there's no question that no matter where you stand on this issue, what's happening here is, is, is in many ways wrong, and in all ways very, very difficult for the community to digest. In the meantime, we have the courts, who can determine that these individual cases represent a violation of the Fifth Amendment right to due process, which is what the ACLU based its restraining order request on. And thanks to the ACLU, our neighbors could have the opportunity to argue their case for asylum, as US law prohibits removal of people who would face likely persecution or torture, as is the case of Christian Indonesians of Chinese descent if they were, if they re-entered Indonesia. As a community, we enact policies on the local level. Anybody can remember that we had a big discussion last year on this issue, and we provide comfort, and we try to instill a sense of normalcy for our neighbors while advocating on their behalf and working with the organizations whose task it is to defend them from justice. So stay tuned, stay active, please, and just keep creating awareness on this issue and educating people on this heavily nuanced issue. It's not just DACA, it's not just Indonesian refugees. There are so many layers to immigration that we need to really understand in order to address these issues head-on. On Friday, February 2nd, the council's Health and Human Services Standing Committee met to discuss several items, including a bill in the Assembly sponsored by Assemblywoman Annette Quijano of Elizabeth, the 20th District, and co-sponsored by our own Assemblywoman Nancy Pinkin, which would extend driving privileges to all eligible residents regardless of immigration status. We also discussed some next steps in our inclusive communities resolution. We also discussed an exciting proposal from the Human Relations Commission, and it's an "All Are Welcome Here" decal project that would feature involvement from our business community. The concept is still in the works, but stay tuned for more, and we have not presented this to the business community yet, so, but this was a public meeting, so I didn't want to just report on it, and it's been discussed in human relations meetings as well. Just a few upcoming meetings. The Highland Park Community Food Pantry will meet tomorrow, February 7th, at 7:00 PM at the Senior Youth Center at 220 South 6th Avenue for their bimonthly meeting. They're working hard, so you should please come and learn more. The Highland Park Board of Health will hold its monthly meeting Thursday, February 8th, 7:00 PM, in the lower-level conference room here at Borough Hall. We have a full agenda, including our planned health fair, date to be announced, and a discussion on opioid abuse and needle exchange programs. Please come. In addition to our discussion, I'm going to skip this part, because we're not, it's not, it's not quite fully baked. Highland Park Gives a Hoot will hold its regular meeting Monday, February 12th, 7:00 PM, in the lower-level conference room here at Borough Hall. Please come. The Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs will hold its first meeting of 2018 on Tuesday, February 13th, 7:30 PM, in the lower-level conference room here at Borough Hall. Now more than ever, please come. The Highland Park Housing Authority will hold its regular meeting Wednesday, February 14th, 6:30 PM, next door at the Samuel Croman Building, 242 South 6th Avenue. Please come. It's also Valentine's Day, so bring your Valentine. Please mark, please mark your calendars for the next Highland Park Human Relations Commission Book Club, where we'll discuss a very important book, White Rage by historian Carol Anderson. This text examines the obstacles that stand in the way of Black progress in America. This event will take place Thursday, March 29th, 7:00 PM, at the Highland Park Senior Youth Center. If you haven't already, please get your official Highland Park municipal ID. You can review the application and get additional information at www.hpborough.com. I'm also very, very pleased to announce that the Highland Park branches of Unity Bank and Wells Fargo will now accept the Highland Park ID as a second form of ID for all transactions, including opening a checking account. More banks will come on board, so stay tuned for that. And finally, please come to the Middle Six Counties' Second Annual Pan-African Flag Raising on Saturday, February 17th, at 9:30 AM at the County Administration Building, 75 Baird Street in New Brunswick. Last year's program was excellent, and I'm sure this year's will live up to that bar. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President George, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to reach out to all our residents who are celebrating Black History Month this month, and I would like to note, somewhat off-topic for Public Works, but a small group of the arts community celebrated 95th birthday of a World War II veteran who resides here in Highland Park with a small birthday party on Sunday as he's been released from Roosevelt Center. We received delivery of the new RTV machine that, recently, which we've been talking about. Basically, this is a machine which is sort of like an overgrown recreational vehicle, one of those four-wheel things you see on the commercials, but it's equipped for municipal work, including a hydraulic plow on the front, and in the back it can carry a approximately 200-gallon brining tank, which actually has a hose that allows it to reach areas. We'll be able to not only plow areas that we've never been able to access with our larger trucks, but in addition, and we mentioned the 5K run and the street fair, we'll be able to service the trash in that area without rolling in all of our giant dump trucks and tying up traffic, so that, this should be very, very helpful. We're also going, as soon as it gets registered, we're going to take a test run across the bridge to see whether it can free up man-hours and time and get the bridge plowed in, and allow us to use actual man-hours on other cleanup downtown. DPW is also involved, along with some volunteers from the Environmental Commission, on the PSENG Solar Field Cleanup Discussions with New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. This landfill is what's called a legacy landfill because it was closed before any regulations went into place. Therefore, there are some specific regulations that allow this to be used for some passive brownfields used, such as solar fields, but it requires a certain certification level for closure. We're working on that, a volunteer group from the Environmental Commission's working with DPW to do a position paper as to why, what's appropriate for use in the meadows with our natural resources. The Environmental Commission meets tomorrow night at the Environmental Center at 8:00. They're working on a new website with links to a number of important environmental partners in the areas. They're also teaming up with photographers and artists in the area to be able to showcase photographs of our environmental features here, many, many of which people aren't all that familiar with, you know, unless you're out hiking in the woods, which some people don't even realize we have. The new website would also archive the older materials and link up with new materials from some of the universities and New Jersey DEP. As I noted, the commission members are also working with PSENG on the solar field implementation. Sponsored jointly by the Environmental Commission and Sustainable Highland Park, as you know, last, at the last meeting on January 16th, we adopted the resolution opposing New Jersey Department of Agriculture regulations concerning beekeeping, which effectively would ban residential hobby and small-scale beekeeping because of the excessively restrictive conditions and its retroactivity to beekeeping activities that were in place as of 2015. Was contacted by several other municipalities and one county government to use, who liked the resolution that we adopted because it addresses the issues. I understand they forwarded their resolution to NJ, to the Department of Agriculture as well. I hear scuttlebutt on the, on the network that, that resolution, that those regulations may be pulled for some significant reconstruction, but I haven't seen anything on the official website. Shade Tree Advisory Committee meets next Wednesday at 7:30. STACK has developed their 2018 tree replacement program. We bring onboard the arborist contractor tonight. This program uses the tree replacement fund, which is paid for by developers and other persons who remove trees for a permit fee. It's not funded by taxpayers. Applications for tree planting requests are available online at the Borough's website or here in the Borough. STACK's plant has been doing strategic planning for the upcoming season. Both STACK and the Meadow Volunteers and Environmental Commission, to some extent, are a little slow because of the winter slowing down their outdoor activities, but STACK's planning will be more firmly set in the next month or two. At this Wednesday's meeting, we will have a discussion with Rutgers personnel regarding the Emerald Ash Borer problem, which is slowly creeping northward from the south and attacks the ash trees, which are one of the better shade trees here in New Jersey. Sustainable Highland Park has set Earth Day for Sunday, April 22nd, at the Environmental Center. Their meeting is February 21st at 7:30 at the Environmental Center. SHP is looking for more, anticipating more activities, vendors, and exhibits than last year. This event was pretty big last year. It should be even more exciting this year with some activities hopefully engaging more of the public. Sustainable Highland Park's plastic bag reduction program, as you know, is working. You can see the signs in front of all of the different stores, some of whom are cooperating in donating recyclable bags or reusable bags. It must be successful because I even have them in my 53 MG, which I use for food shopping when it's, when it's raining out. So it must be working. The program will continue through, through the end of the spring. Sustainable Highland Park recently held a planning session to set goals and define project targets for the upcoming year and for longer-term projects, and I'm hoping to get an update on that to bring to you and discuss at the next meeting on Wednesday, the 21st. On a note that's kind of across the board, I was asked by five or six people in the last week to request that people, and I know I received an email from Councilwoman Fine on this as well, to clean up behind their dogs. Just because it's cold, it doesn't mean, maybe the problem is a little less noticeable, but it's certainly still there. And if you recall, our schoolchildren walk home from school usually, three or four abreast so they can chat and talk, and they're walking the sidelines, and several parents have noted that it's a problem. So I would request that you do that. I also noticed that when raking the last batch of leaves, I turned up quite a few small presents from, and so I, I personally would appreciate people cleaning up. But also note, this is a note for a program that I hope to be able to bring around here to Highland Park. It's going to take a lot of work, but my son, who's just promoted to E1 Marine out of the Bristol, Bristol Center, started a hiring program at his company in North Jersey to bring in veterans who, who through rumor or discussion or actual problems are having a difficulty after discharge or after overseas duty and finding a job. And the, the company itself has a higher veterans program, but they allowed some of the supervisors, of which he is one, to start a program to actually bring them in, pilot them in the program, leading to employment. And I hope to get more information over the coming months, in particular for HR, to see if this program is workable on a scale here in Highland Park. That's my report.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Nothing major, just a couple of reminders. Joan jogged my mind that the 12th is Lincoln's birthday, which is a Borough Hall will be closed, so just be aware of that, you know, if you need to do business, will be closed. Matt, hoot meeting, just a note, heads up. Borough Hall will be closed on the 12th.
I'm sorry.
Never mind, I'll catch up. Your 19th, President's Day.
Oh, the hoot meeting, okay.
Is also closed, so just keep that in mind. If you need to do business here, just make sure you make your arrangements around those dates.
Thank you.
We can still, just, I'm sorry, Mayor, just because I reported on the hoot meeting, but still access the building, though?
I'll talk, just talk to me afterwards.
Okay, all right. For those watching at home.
Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I do have a report. I just want to iterate a bit of what Councilwoman Hirsch was saying about what happened here last week, when our community was jarred as one of our most loved residents, Mr. Harry Pagananen, was forced to seek sanctuary in the Reformed Church of Highland Park in order to escape detention. I want to thank all the residents of Highland Park who came out to voice their concern for Mr. Pagananen and all of the Indonesian Christians who are being sought right now. They came to this country seeking religious freedom, and that's exactly what our country was formed by. The pilgrims came here seeking religious freedom. So I want to thank everyone who came out because it took people like you to impress upon the ACLU and the courts to make this happen, so that Harry could go home and other people who are seeking sanctuary in the church because of this religious persecution, and the ICE agents that were coming for them in our town and Metuchen. We did partner with Metuchen on many of these things. And I also want to thank Councilwoman Hirsch, who really dedicated a lot of time to the situation that was going on here last week. And also, I want to thank you for sharing our resolution, inclusive community resolution with Metuchen. They now want to start modeling more of what they're doing on what we've been accomplishing here, so thank you for that. Last week, speaking of religion, last week, I held the first of what I hope will become regular quarterly meetings with faith-based leaders in and around Highland Park. They represented Highland Park residents of Christian, Muslim, and Jewish faiths. We opened a dialogue of shared interests and concerns. The enthusiasm for the opportunity to share thoughts and issues was evident throughout the entire meeting. We discussed common concerns such as homelessness in Highland Park, immigration issues, and affordable health care, and I look forward to working together with these faith leaders towards our common goals for Highland Park residents. It really was a wonderful meeting. There were people from all kinds of backgrounds there, and everybody wanted to learn more about what each other's programs were all about. It really, with all the bad stuff that was happening last week, it was, it gave me faith in humanity to see that happening, so look forward to more of that coming our way. Councilwoman Foster Dublin is not here, so I'm giving you a little update on our teen center. In case you haven't noticed, the cement has been poured, and so we are still on target for a fall opening of the center. She will be working with the schools to put together a group of teens that will advise on how to decorate the place, what to name it, what, you know, they'll work with her and some of the police officers on programming. And they are also going to continue working with Brick Township, who, they recently opened their first teen center, which is basically the same size as ours, and so they're, they're learning from their experience. And the Mayor's Wellness Campaign is off to a great And the Mayor's Wellness Campaign is off to a great start in 2018. We have several returning and active committee members, and there are still openings on the Mayor's Wellness Campaign. Dr. Cliff Lacy is the chair of that campaign, of that committee, and they're doing lots of good things. They have lots of plans. The New Jersey Quality Health Institute grant, which we received, will go towards several programs this year, including our new move with the mayor, and no, that does not mean pack back boxes and put it in a truck. We are doing yoga over at the Kinetic Studio, and that's being paid for by this grant after we work out. We have a healthcare professional who is giving us some tips on how to stay healthy, and there's a different healthcare professional every week. Our first session was yesterday at, what time, eight AM, I think it was? And now we're going to probably switch times around to see if we can reach more people who couldn't make it at eight. So stay tuned, look at the borough's website, check out our Facebook page, my Facebook page, and we'll be posting when next week's session will be. It will be on Monday. We're not sure yet if it's going to be eight o'clock or twelve o'clock to let people who work in town and live here actually participate as well. All righty. Is there any public discussion? Okay, so, Herb, you want?
I, I, I defy public discussion, but it hasn't been a meeting in years.
Okay, do you have anything you want to ask the council?
Um, yes, I do. Oh, you go first.
No, I'm a resident.
Oh, you want me to?
Okay. Just state your name and address when you come up to the microphone.
Okay.
Try to talk into the microphone so folks at home can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. John Valeri, one oh-six South Sixth Avenue. I actually have a lot of questions, so, but I'll keep them as short and brief as possible because some of them were already answered, because I did get the message about the daytime burglaries and everything.
Okay.
And, and it's been the same thing like it was over the summer, just now in the winter. I don't know how many there were, but is there a way that we could, and I'm glad you're here, Chief, if there's a way we could maybe, you know, get more cops on patrol, like on foot, maybe if we can't have cameras, have like a neighborhood watch program, if that's possible? Because, I mean, I mean, the fact of the matter, that Highland Park's a small town, and everybody wants to live here in peace. I mean, they don't want to have their house broken into. I mean, a friend of the family, his house was broken into, unfortunately enough, his son was home, but, and nothing bad happened to his son. He was able to, the guy ran out, he was able to identify the guy. However, say the guy was armed, you know, something could have happened.
Right.
So.
Chief, do you want to address that?
Sure.
At the microphone, please.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. Obviously, we do the best we can with what we have. As far as the Neighborhood Watch program, we'd be happy to start one if we can get enough people interested. Several years ago, we tried doing that, and we had very little interest, so we were unable to get it off the ground. But if you're interested in that, contact Lieutenant Panacella, and if we can get, we need more than you, but if we could get people in the neighborhood or any of the neighborhoods, we'd be happy to, to follow up with that. The best thing I could tell you in the interim is what we tell you on NICSOL. If anyone sees anything that they think is suspicious, please call. Many times we get called, like a week later, they didn't think anything of it at the time. A week later doesn't do us a lot of good. So if anyone sees anything that they think is out of the ordinary, better, safe than sorry, call the police department, we will check it out, but thank you.
Yeah. Why don't we also, when is your next public safety meeting, Chief?
It's not scheduled at this point, but I'm sure it'll be shortly.
Okay, so at the next public safety meeting, could you discuss with your committee a Neighborhood Watch? And then if the committee thinks that's a good way to go, we can help you advertise for it, so maybe you'd get more respondents?
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Next question that I have, because I understand that, and I was just reading in the article about millennials, and it's great because it wants me, it helps me prove my, you know, try to reiterate my question even further, because I understand a lot of people are moving into Highland Park, and that, that's great, you know, because you won't want to have, like, you know, big community and everything. However, I've also noticed that the parking situation has gotten very intense. There are, there are not as many parking spots available, some streets that allow you to park on both sides of the street, it's gotten so crowded because the roads are so narrow. I mean, cars would have to back out, back up, just so one car could pass and the other one, you know, right after the other one. So, and I noticed that a lot of streets have parking only on one side, but what about the ones that have parking on two sides with the narrow roads?
So I'm glad you brought that up. I, we've been having, we had some community meetings recently, and parking came up on the other side of town also. You're on South Sixth, you said, right?
Yep, South Sixth, that's my street.
Yeah, so, so we just heard about some parking situations. It appears that there are people who are parking in certain areas for an entire day and then walking across the bridge to New Brunswick. So Council President George has been working with a task force to address the parking issue. Do you want to talk a little?
I can briefly, John, I just want to, before I address parking, your, your logo sweatshirts. I've seen more of them around town than Carter Has Pills. We've been looking at parking, and one of the things we know, actually, we did a utilization study in cooperation with the police department that the chief authorized, and we're almost finished summarizing them, but it's very difficult going through the videos that are shot for that. But one of the prob, we've noticed two problems. One is that, both anecdotally and from, from actual observation, one of the biggest problems we have in some areas of town, mainly towards the bridge, is that people who are commuting using the train in New Brunswick are parking here in town, walking across the bridge and leaving their cars there all day. There were specific complaints from South Adelaide, for instance, about it. There is also parking in parts of the north side as well. You remember on South Adelaide, there used to be that just big vacant area where the Y was?
Yes.
That had over sixty cars at a time parking there, believe it or not. That people were parking for free, so they saved the garage costs. That's one problem. The second problem, and you were talking about the parking in the residential areas, is a totally different, totally different problem. In part, it's also caused in some areas by the same thing, the commuters. In, in some areas, especially off Woodbridge, some of them are, are commuting by bus and leaving their cars there, because, as you know, bus routes aren't the greatest in the world.
Oh, I know, that's right.
So they, there are some warehousing of cars. The residential problem, we haven't really specifically looked at, except to the extent that parking solutions downtown, changing the parking around downtown, the big debate of whether there should be two-hour parking, because right now, there's no parking restriction. You know, in my experience at working with parking authorities creates residential problems. It's a bigger, bigger ball of wax. The third problem that the chief is well aware of, because I've, I've discussed it with him and the officers, are our old streets are so narrow that lines of sight are very, very cramped to see around corners. So it's kind of a lot of program, all problems that kind of roll into one. But we are, we are trying to come up with some solutions, at least for the downtown area, that don't increase the problem for residential. If we can stay away from increasing it, we're probably winning in, in the new, you know, as they say, millennial-driven redevelopment. I, I'm kind of feeling that if we can just not increase it, we're going to be winning the battle.
Okay.
But there're more, there'll be more about that in the coming, probably next six months, as the Borough Council begins to discuss what, if any, plans we make. We're also looking at, should redevelopment plans for downtown include more provision for parking, or should they include provisions for people who are actually walking down, walking to the train and don't need a car?
Okay.
So we're, we have been working on it.
Okay, all right. My next question is, because I understand that there've been like a lot of events in town, especially over the summer, besides the National Night Out, you have the Highland Park Outdoor Movie Nights and everything. Arts in the Park is great. I mean, having two street fairs and, you know, that reminds me, took me back to when I was a kid, up until I was ten, then they decreased it to one. But however, is there a way we could have, like, more art-related stuff? Because years ago, when I lived down south in Richmond, Virginia, they had a thing called First Fridays, where the first Friday of every month, it was like the streets were filled with performers and vendors and this, that, and everything else. So is there a way we could have, you know, or maybe like a concert series, you know, because we have a lot of artists in town who, you know, musical artists, that are like up and coming and want to make a name for themselves, and a lot of times, they have to go here, there, and everywhere, but if they're in town, you know, you know, have them perform their music, or, or, you know, their stand-up act or whatever, and, you know, it'll increase their chances of getting an audience to make a big name for themselves.
So I know that Main Street Highland Park are used to on Thursday nights in the summer have music on the street corners.
Oh, really?
Yeah, which was, which was a really fun eve, evening, especially, you know, we have the benches, so, so it worked out really nicely. Councilwoman Welkowitz, do you want to talk to that at all? Does Main Street have any additional plans like that?
I don't know if they have any plans to that, to that program, but if you're available to, to join us, I think on the twenty-first is our next Main Street meeting, would you like to come?
What day would that be?
Sure, hold on, it's Wednesday. Let me check the date, because I think we moved it around because of Valentine's Day. We wanted to save our marriages.
I could appreciate that.
Six PM on the twenty-first, it's a Wednesday.
Okay, I'll try to, is it okay if I come late, because I'm coming from North Jersey for my day job?
Yeah, sure. Why don't I give you my card, though? We could keep in touch, all right?
Okay, thank you, thank you. And my last question is, because I was talking about, like, you know, like, more like art-related events and like, stuff like that, another question I had, and this was, and this, this is just off the head, too, because I understand that a lot of people are into like the athletics in town, especially with the five K race and everything. I, a couple of years ago, I was told that there was a bike race, am I right or not?
Go ahead, Susie. Councilwoman Welkowitz, you want to talk to me?
Our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee.
Okay.
Plans to do a lot of things in May. May is National Bicycle Month.
Oh, okay.
And we're, we're thinking about, we're going to start planning now for some guided bike rides, and, and it also came up at our last committee meeting, that maybe we should have some kind of measured bike ride as well. So thank you for that.
Yeah, because, because I, because, I mean, having the races, the softball leagues, I mean, that's great. However, I mean, I think, I think this town has potential to have more stuff. I mean, especially a small town like Metuchen, they have all these soccer programs and track programs, hence why they're so good in track and this, that, and everything else.
We did, we did one bike ride last year, so we want to do, yeah, we want to do a few more this year.
Okay, all right, thank you. And no further questions.
And I think it's a good idea for you to stay in touch with Councilwoman Welkowitz. Thank you.
Mayor, may I, may I just, John, I know that you had, I know that you had observed some parking violations, you know, and so forth, you know, in your neighborhood. Just, you know, if, if, if anybody ever sees anything like that, they're, they're free to call, call the police's non, non, non-emergency number. So if you see, yeah, blocking driveways or anything like that. Yeah, I, I have. Good. One of your, I forgot her name, but one of your female officers came by my house, and then another one of your officers during the snow, and he's a friend of the family, Joey O'Blair. So, thank you for the reminder, though, Matt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so please come up to the microphone. Yeah. Just state your name and address.
My name is, okay.
Talk into the mic, please.
Okay, let me just say someone. My name is Carrie Lieberstein. My address is one-eleven North Fourth Avenue. I live in Highland Park. I've been a resident for over ten years. I want to address an issue. I'm concerned about the intersection, Harrison Avenue and North Second Avenue. It is a high-traffic intersection because it connects River Road to a more populated section of Highland Park, and at night, it's very confusing. And there are various factors that make this intersection confusing to motorists and could be a hazard to motorists and pedestrians. At night, when you drive east on Harrison, that's the direction if you came from River Road, it's, it is very dark, and you first come across a street light, which is hundreds of yards away from the stop sign, and upon, I'm sorry, upon close examination, you can see that part of the stop line at the stop sign is partially faded or has been partially faded, and there resembles four lines prior to the stop line. And it's more, especially more difficult to see at night. There is no direct light at the stop sign and at the crosswalk, at the intersection of Harrison Avenue and North Second Avenue. The only available light is to the right of the stop sign, hundreds of yards away, going southbound on North Second Avenue. At night, this is dangerous to pedestrians. Also, the, the stop line itself is very close to the intersection, maybe perhaps too close. And at one point, I do have pictures to show you if necessary, the, the stop line is within twelve inches or less before the crosswalk. Also, there is no light at all on North Second Avenue between Harrison Avenue and Cleveland Avenue. If a driver is on Harrison Avenue and makes a left turn, there is no light at all, there is no street light. And this could create a, a dangerous situation for both the motorists and for pedestrians. And it is, at night, it really is literally pitch black. And there are different state guidelines, I know, regarding intersections. In one book, I know I can provide info, this to you, the, by the Department of Transportation, the emphasis of adequate lighting is required or strongly encouraged. Also, there's a reference that stated by the Division of Vehicles regarding how there should be one distinguishable white line at the stop sign, and that is a certain distance from the crosswalk. And there are many sections in Highland Park which do follow these guidelines. I also have a, and a sign that also says, "Stop here." There's a number of them which do follow the state guidelines with an arrow, but I don't understand why these guidelines aren't followed at Harrison and North Second Avenue at the intersection. To summarize, basically, the lighting is poor, inadequate. There are four lines prior to the stop, white stop line, and at night, it is confusing. And like I said, the light, the stop line itself is not clearly seen, is not delineated really well at night. It's hard to notice. You just see, wow, there's all these lines. And, like I said, there's no light at North Second between Harrison and Cleveland, and also a stop line which is extremely close to the crosswalk. A distinguishable white line is necessary and required under state guidelines, and illumination is required or strongly encouraged to prevent accidents. A stop line should not come close to the crosswalk. If these issues are addressed, there's less of a chance of accidents, and allows pedestrians to walk safely and enhances the motor's ability to drive safely under difficult conditions.
Okay.
So basically, I wanted to, given all this, I know I've given a lot of information, but it is a concern, and I'm not saying this personally, I did, there was an issue concerning myself.
Right.
I'm not here to address that, but I have just, I know, visited just a few times in the past and noticed that these are conditions that are serious. And I just wanted to know if there were any, any plans to implement new, new aids or, I guess, guidelines or signs or what have you that would help the motorists and also protect pedestrians at the same time?
So Carrie, I'm going to again refer to Councilwoman Welkowitz. She actually is a liaison to a community, to a committee called a, our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee. So Councilwoman is...
Well, we're going to take a look at, yeah, we'll take a look at that intersection right away with, with, with the chief, right? Would you?
Like I said, I do have pictures of, I took various pictures of how it looks at night. I don't know if you want them or not.
If I might, Mayor, also, Carrie contacted me initially as a, as a possible DPW question.
Right, right.
I, I emailed back, and I said, "Can you get me the details which you sent me this afternoon?" I've already forwarded them to Public Safety as well to take a look at that, because Public Safety tells DPW what it needs to do. And Chief, I'll forward that to you as well. I got the specific. When, I drive that intersection coming back every night. One of the things I notice that's the most, that actually causes all the rest of the problems, is with the new development down the end, and the fact that cars are allowed to park on the shoulder there. When you look to the left, there are vehicles which sometimes block your vision, and just because, as you know, the road is climbing and then it drops down into the new development. So the lighting that's down there, which is new and bright, is actually... So, the lighting that's down there, which is new and bright, is actually dropped down because it's on the other side of the hill, and sometimes you get a glare condition, you can't see that someone has come through the, the stop sign at Cleveland, which I think is the biggest sin, because-
Right.
I, I, you know, I've had to jam on the brakes a couple of times, because you just don't see the people coming.
Right.
So, that's one of the things that we'll, we'll hopefully look at.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay, um, who's next? Mr. Gross, would you like to go next?
Um, yeah, I'd like, uh, I want anyone else, uh, to, uh-
Would you like to come up? Please just state your name and address.
Jeffrey Bowden, 25 Cleveland Avenue. Um, and I have a question, or questions about the property at 35 Harrison Avenue. Uh, first, on behalf of our household and neighbors, wanted to voice some encouragement to the borough to continue to press this issue, and mostly, I would like a status update.
Okay.
As much as you can share.
Uh, Borough Attorney?
Well, uh, hopefully, you're aware that the borough has been to court several times over the property, and the judge has issued a court order which required the first step to be taken, and that is the scaffolding taken down and also the debris on the property, the construction debris, and that has been accomplished. Uh, they were given a deadline to do that, they met the deadline. There's a second deadline, which is coming up later this month, which requires that the property owner take down the illegal construction on the roof.
Correct.
And, uh, we are, uh, working with them to make sure they meet that deadline, and we're also going to meet with the property owner shortly to discuss, uh, what the ultimate plans are for that property. So, uh, they do know they have a deadline, they have to meet that deadline, and if they don't meet that deadline, we'll be back in court the next day to get, um, a further court order and some directive about what needs to be done. If they don't meet the deadline, we already have the authority, that is the borough does, to hire the necessary construction people to go in and take down the illegal part of the roof and secure the house. We'd like to avoid doing that, because we're not in that business. So, we're try- trying to get them to cooperate, and so far, they have on the first step, and we do expect they'll cooperate on the second step.
Perfect. Um, we appreciate your efforts and prefer that this did not languish.
Right.
Thank you.
So would we. Thank you. Mr. Gross, please state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Herb Gross, and I live in, uh, Adelaide Gardens on Adelaide Avenue. Uh, about a week ago, in his State of the Union message, for the first time in over 50 years, this has been the first president that has acknowledged and given us, the veterans, the men and the women who have served this country, the dignity and respect that we deserve and we demand. Uh, I would like, at this time, to inform all the veterans, the men and the women, when you get down to get your income tax filled out, if you haven't already, make sure that you tell your preparer that by law, for the first time in over 50 years, ladies and gentlemen, the veterans now can demand and receive a $3,000 deduction in your income tax. Make sure that you mention this to your, uh, tax preparer. Uh, this is very important. Again, I say, this is the first time in over 50 years that any president has given us the dignity and respect. Uh-
No, it's okay, I can answer.
On January 29th, we held a bingo at the Roosevelt Home for the men and the women that are, are, that are patients over there. A lot of these men and women have been longtime residents of Highland Park. Certain people that I have served with, and I have mentioned more than once, to anyone in attendance here tonight, when you have a free time, go over to the home. You do not need no appointment. Go over there and say hello to, to all the veterans that are there, they would appreciate. Uh, in closing, I just have one issue that I would like to bring out to all the veterans that are watching and listening, they know exactly what I'm talking about. I would like to bring out and give respect to the men of the Merchant Marine. The, as far as we are concerned, they are veterans. They bought us the supplies aboard the ships, and, and these supplies are classified information, which I don't dare speak about, because I, I don't want to get myself in trouble, and believe me, it is classified information. To the men that served in the Merchant Marine, that are serving today, that are bringing our, our supplies to all these foreign lands, that we, that we are engaged in giving these people their freedom, uh, always support the men of the Merchant Marine. Thank you.
Mr. Gross, can I ask you a question, please? On the, uh, $3,000 tax deduction, is that for 2017 or 2018 taxes?
Uh, I filed mine in 2018.
So, it's, it, so it's for 2017 taxes, is-
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That's open to every man and woman, uh, veteran, make sure that you, uh, tell your tax preparer, he, your tax preparer is well informed of what, what I'm, uh, bringing out right now and what the mayor just happened to say.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I, um, just, I don't want to get into tax advice, but, um, I believe, I believe that this exemption started, was actually proposed in 2016 and actually began last year.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but I, I'd want to verify that, but I don't think this is the first year that that exemption is available, at least in New Jersey.
Okay. Okay.
But thank you, thank you, Mr. Gross.
Um, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'm moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt items number 10 through 19?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, I am, um, appointing Samuel Klein and Company as our new borough auditors. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, this is our second public discussion, is there any additional public discussion for this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn to the conference meeting?
So moved.
Second.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you all.